All right, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1436. It is 7:01. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with item number one on the agenda is roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams, Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Adams.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Adams.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Adams is excused. Number two on the agenda is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections to be made? All right, hearing none. Item number three, we have presentations. And the first presentation is going to be from a Mr. Eddie Hawkins for the cadet program. So, Mr. Hawkins, if you want to take the podium?
Yeah, absolutely.
First, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all in developing a program such as this. To kind of give you a quick snippet of what you all have in front of you. One of my young people is there. Some of the other ones may trickle in. However, we have a formal meeting when we'll be here with you all. So, you all wanted to develop a cadet program similar to what they have in Cincinnati, similar to like police cadet program. However, you wanted to give them an experience of more than just police. So, we kind of brainstormed myself, Assistant Fire Chief Hill, Officer Wilson, and what could we do so that young people could get a true understanding of what Forest Park had to offer? So, we developed a Forest Park cadet program where young people will have an opportunity to work with police, fire, public works, and government. So, you all will be getting emails from me because I'll be having you all come in to work with my young people to kind of talk about what you all do as a whole. The object of the program is to give them exposure to what Forest Park has to offer and some of the opportunities. Right now, we have 12 young people. We're in partnership with the Tavern House. Tavern House is the funding source which pays the salaries. They're paid $13 an hour. There are some other things that we had to work out based on age as far as the young people are concerned. They work 30 hours a week, Monday through Thursday. 8:45 to 4:15. They'll be working some of you all's evening events. We're actually going to formally come to a council meeting and participate. So, I guess I'll be sending out an email to give you all so you all can come out because I want to interview you all, kind of find out what you all do. Last week was a very energizing week. Every agency came in and spoke to them. So, the fire came in, police came in, public works came in, and we kind of finagled the government part of it. However, the young people were able to develop a mission statement and a slogan. I'll pass this out to you all so you can check it out. This is what they developed on their own. They sat down, they kind of brainstormed over it. I kind of gave them the emphasis of what they were doing, what they would be a part of, and that is what they came up with. That is your first... You are actually a pilot program. There's not a program like this anywhere in the country as far as what I can see. I did my research. So, technically, you all are the pilot. And technically, that is your official mission statement for your cadet program.
Okay.
Our young people are very enthused, very excited. We've had at least three parents call in and say how appreciative they were. 10 of the young people are from Forest Park or attend Wyndwood's High School. Two of them are from Fairfield, but they have ties to Forest Park. The goal is to take the program and grow it. You know, right now, we're sitting at 12. Next year, we'd like to do 24. You know, if possible, once we're done here, we'd like to continue in some facet, working with them throughout the entire year. So, that way, we kind of stay in contact with them. That way, that's what, to me, that's what benefits a good program. The best part of a good program is the follow-up. You're going to have a bang-out program that changes the world, but it's the follow-up is what I care most about. So, my goal is to continue to work with these young people throughout the school year and then for them to continue under the young people. So, next year, when I'm standing here, we're talking about a program of 24 to 30 young people. And in that, not really much else. You know, this is the second week. They came in bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. As you can see, we all have our uniforms and stand-up young men.
All right.
Every young person has their polo shirt, khaki pants. They got PT uniforms that says Forest Park Cadet. Today, we went on our first mile-and-a-half run, so they were all kind of... I don't know how to say this. It's real hot. So, they were all very, very interested. I can talk all day. I like to, you know, for me, whenever I'm dealing with young people, I just kind of want to let my young people speak on their experience, want to kind of give them some insight on it.
My experience of being part of the Forest Park Cadet program, so far, it's only been two weeks, but I like it a lot. My other fellow young people, I feel like they like it too. It helps me. I've learned a lot. I've learned how to speak publicly because I suck at it. I really do.
You're doing good.
I feel like being a part of this program really opens you to more opportunities. You meet people. I feel like going through this program like sets you up in a better position to live your life, to be successful, independent, to teach other people what you learn from this program. And that's what I really like about this program.
Pretty good.
I feel like it's a good program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions of us?
All right, thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
I don't have a question, but I think we're so excited. And so, thank you for all of the Officer Wilson and Assistant Chief Hill and Mr. Hawkins. You do a lot in our community. And so, thank you for starting this program, and I hope it grows. And so, we're very proud of... And hopefully, we'll be the model for other communities. And so, just thank you for taking your time out and serving the City of Forest Park.
I've gotten some phone calls from... Hamilton called. Someone called and said they thought that you all are actually, like I said, you're a trendsetter. If there's anyone else who gives young people an opportunity to see all four facets. And I know a lot of people say, well, how can we recruit people to do our professions? So, for me, it's really not about recruiting. It's just about education, providing opportunities for them to know whether they would like to be police, fire, or public works. I think a lot of them had no idea what went into actually just making sure that the streets stay salted, you know, who cuts the grass, all those things. And the beautiful part about it is that every... So, on Mondays is government day, so you all will be getting an email from me. So, your Mondays is your day. Tuesday is fire. Wednesday is police, and Thursday is public work. So, on those days, that agency will come in. The first part of the day will be discussion, some instruction, and the last part, the second part of the day will be practical. So, like on Thursdays, you know, that's public work. So, they pretty much came in and said, this is what we do. So, you all will see us around. You'll see us out there, you know, doing mulch, planting flowers, you know. I know they're going to be, everybody's going to be CPR trained, stop the bleed. Officer Wilson and myself, they're going to be very versed in the ORC. So, at the end of this program, what every young person will be able to do is have a very educated conversation about the City of Forest Park. That's my goal. I think we're on the right track. Young man, tell them how old you are.
16.
16 years old. So, at 16 years old, you know, to come here and say this is something I want to do at least, you know, he's been around this area since he was a kid, so why not invest in it? There are no more questions?
I just have a quick question. So, first off, love the program. Back in the safety, our safety meetings, this was, whoo, we, this was long sought out and sought after, and so, we appreciate the work that you're doing. And it's good to see you in that green shirt. Make sure you get a picture with that green shirt. That's the joke because he's police officer or something. But anyways, so, the one question I have is when the different departments come in, are you also talking about what it takes in terms of career track and education in order to get to those positions and the income that comes with it?
Absolutely. So, the goal is for them to understand exactly what it takes to be police, fire. So, when you all get my email, that will be your task. Your task will be to come in, sit down with them, and kind of educate them, what does the city manager do? What does the mayor do? You know, because a lot of them don't really know how council works. They don't know how government works. They don't know, you know, they don't know what the House or the Senate, they don't know how those things actually work. And for them to actually be able to sit down with the individuals who are doing the work is a beautiful thing. So, that's why firsthand, it's easy for them to come in. So, Mr. Mayor, when you get my email, they're going to be broadening you up with questions. And so, the next time we come back, we'll actually want to participate in the council meeting. So, they'll know exactly what's going on today.
All right.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, young man. You are a good public speaker, so keep up the good work, okay?
All right, does anyone else have any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Thank you for that. All right. Looks like we have another presentation on the agenda. And then, let the record reflect. Councilmember Adams has joined council. See, I got it, John. I've been studying my Robert's Rules. All right, so we have a presentation from, a mall development presentation from Mr. Robbs Mijunas and Vandecar. I feel like I'm announcing a band. Come on, Rob, Rob and the Vandecars.
You hook up the computer?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay. Got to wait for the technology.
Yeah, that's fine. While it's getting pulled up, if you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Robbs Mijunas. I'm grateful to be back here with you all and making this public presentation to the people of Forest Park. This is our first public presentation to the public.
Well, on camera.
On camera.
Public hearings, yeah.
Yes. We've had a public hearing, and we came back here to present this to the public. Shall I wait for the...
Yeah, if you want, if you need the visuals.
Where did Chris go?
Went to get his laptop.
Oh, I thought he had it in his hand.
Oh, wow, okay.
I want to do a little background. We all know a little bit about what we call the Cincinnati Mills. It used to be Forest Fair Mall. Forest Fair Mall was first developed around 1988, '87, and it opened with a lot of fanfare, and it's been redeveloped about three times over the years. And today, we're talking about redeveloping it for hopefully the last time. And today, we're here to present for a rezoning of a portion of the site to light industrial or industrial zoning to allow for industrial development on a portion of the site, and the remaining site will be retail. We are working with one major retailer, a food store, and can't be named. But we're working with them. We have documents going back and forth as we speak, and we hope to solidify that deal here very soon with all the paperwork signed. The Cincinnati Mills, when it was last developed, had a financial inducement. Well, there was a bond that was sold for the redevelopment and the addition of the parking garage. If you've ever went to the cinema out in the mall, there was a parking garage that was built with that cinema. And as part of that, there was a public finance or a bond that was sold. Today, there's approximately about $10 million plus remaining in that bond. That's basically a mortgage on the site. And the bondholder or the mortgage holder has to be told or has to allow us to do certain things on the site, just like when you have a mortgage, you have to inform your bank about certain things you're doing, your house, or when you're going to sell it, you got to pay it off. Well, in this case, we're working with our mortgage holder, the bondholder, in redeveloping the site. He has to give us permission to tear down the mall, believe it or not, even though that it's not working all that well. So, what we're doing is we came up with a plan that the bondholder has agreed with in order to be able to pay back the bondholder in the future after we redevelop the site. And this entails the rezoning of the industrial. A portion of the site into industrial and a portion of the site remains retail. Now, a question you might all have is what's happening in Fairfield? Well, right at this moment, there's nothing happening in Fairfield because we have an existing retailer named Kohl's. It has a lease, and it could last up to 12 years. And on your screen is a site plan. And as you can see on the top of the site plan, Kohl's is located there, and we did not, it's right beside the green. We didn't block out the building. You can see it outlined in a green line above the shaded green. We don't know what's going to happen with Kohl's and how long they'll be there, but they could be there upwards of another 12 years. So, we can't develop that area for two reasons, because of Kohl's and because the bondholder basically owns that garage too. That's part of the, that's part of what the money went to, which was the public purpose of the financing. So, as you can see, the concept of this plan, isn't necessarily what it's going to be. The concept is, right now, it's three buildings. What they're called is flex business buildings. Those buildings can have high-tech manufacturing. They can have high-tech assembly. They can have drug distribution, meaning pharma distribution. They can have any number of things happening in those buildings as it pertains to business. So, they are basically what we like to call it as a big old job farm because all different types of jobs can go into all those buildings, or it can be a combination of things. But what we're asking for right now is to be able to have the opportunity to put, to develop that site into industrial. And as you can see from the plan in the front, or we'll call to the left portion of the screen, there is a food store, as you can see, proposed retail, and two other buildings for a total of another, it could be another 40,000 square feet or more, depending upon how deep that building were to be. And then, we have two pads. Those could be restaurants, full-service restaurants. Those could be entertainment facilities and restaurants. As you've seen, there's tiger golf. There's pickleball. There's all kinds of things along with entertainment in restaurants and things like that that could go there. And then, we have a gas pump related to the food store. And the rest of it is the Red Lobster and the Chipotle and the Chinese restaurant and going into Fairfield. But today, we're here with council to possibly have a first reading of the rezoning proposal for industrial. I think, I think we have a 3D model, yes. This is a, this is a 3D model that we had made up just so that people could see, gives some scale to what we're, what the vision could be. The three buildings there are the three industrial buildings. And then, you have the food store and retail on the top right-hand side. And then, we have, I'll show you what this 3D looks like because it's pretty cool. By the way, they don't trust me with this kind of stuff. Yeah.
So, just for clarity purposes and the residents watching at home, that is a concept plan. It's a site plan. Nothing is finalized. Nothing has been agreed upon. The mall is still owned by another developer, but, I mean, another owner, but you are a potential developer looking at the mall, prospecting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We're finishing up on the documents. Well, we thought we would be able to do this, and this is not happening. What we have is a 3D 360 of the development. So, you can see down, and it goes around in two positions. Unfortunately... It went up on the computer screen but not on the TV screens. Yeah.
We'll be sure to make this available on our website.
Yeah, we can, what we can do is we can email it to you.
Okay.
Thank you. What's up? All right, so the bottom right. The bottom right, help me with that angle.
That is, that's facing the parking garage into Fairfield.
As if it were on the end of that, that last building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then, and then you have Kohl's on the, to the, connected to it on the very end over the top of that screen.
What are those blue, what's those, what are those blue patches on the, right there?
Oh, those are just, those are pickleball courts. It's just a concept of pickleball.
Like an outdoor eatery nearby or something?
Yes. Recreation, entertainment. There's a brewery up there with probably something else, I think, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Is this the end of the presentation?
Anything else?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Smijunas?
Nope.
All right, we're hearing none. Well, thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes the presentations. So, we're going to move on to item number four. But before that, we will more than likely open it up to have another public hearing. So, the presentate, any other residents who would like to come and hear more about the presentation, we'll invite you back to discuss further. All right. So, moving on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So, this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So, when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So, if anyone from, yes, if you want to please come up to the podium, council member? Your name and address.
My name's Diana Herbie. I live at 744 Decatur Court, and I am here for two reasons. One is to make a correction of something that I said about a month ago when I was telling you about the changeover at Waycross Community Media in the chair of the board, and I did not credit Mr. Orendorf with enough years. Instead of serving 32 years, he has served 42 years. He was the only chair of that committee since its inception, and I didn't want to short him on that. The other reason is because I was coming up to do that, I also thought that I would also thank the city for its diversion of some monies from the grant to provide scholarships to Forest Park students who are attending the Waycross Camp, Summer Camp Workshop, and they will be graduating in mid-July and will be premiering their production that they do as a graduation project for the students who attend and also for their families. So, I wanted to thank you for that. And also mention that if you happen to be like me and don't like to be out in the heat and humidity, you can watch the concerts on the green on Waycross Community Media.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Herbie. All right, are there any other communications from the public at this time? All right, hearing none. Moving on, that closes item number four. Moving on to item number five. So, at this point, council is going to go into executive session to discuss confidential business information of an applicant for an economic development assistance. So, I will need a, I'm going to make a motion. Are we going to executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Again, we are going to discuss confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance. No official vote will be taken. No city business will be conducted. So, we are going to break for executive session and reconvene momentarily. We are now back into the council meeting. So, that concludes item number five, which is executive session. Moving on to item number six, which is reports from council members. We're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello, council and all of our guests today. Beautification flags are going out this week. I repeat, beautification flags are going out this week. So, if you did not call and ask for your home to be viewed, we will still view homes. However, those who call, we are guaranteed we will not miss you. We will definitely walk by and look at what you have going on. But if you did not give us a call, we're still going to look at every house in Forest Park. And those that were not called, that are worthy of a flag, we are guaranteed to give you one. Those who called in, we're going to see what's going on with your yard, and if it's beautiful, you will get a flag. And again, those flags are new, and they were created by our high school students at Wyndwood's. And we're so excited to have that designed by three of our students here from Forest Park themselves. So, again, beautification flags are going out this week. Also too, I had the amazing opportunity to go to the AKA Jazz Brunch as a Forest Park councilwoman. Very well done. The Forest Park chapter AKA did a great job, so it was an honor to be there and to be acknowledged. Our mayor was also there, so it was just nice to be there and be acknowledged as a Forest Park representative. And again, that chapter within Forest Park did a really good job putting that together.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. Do you have any work session items to add?
No, sir. I don't have any work session items to add today, but thank you for asking.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not so much a report, just a reminder that on Economic Development Commission, there are two vacancies, and on Environmental Awareness Board, there are three vacancies. You can go to the city website at forestpark.org and find out information on the application process. We would love to have your volunteerism.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Do you have any work session items?
Economic development.
Okay. The commission or general?
Oh, in general.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, welcome to our guest, to our city residents. Only thing I have to report is we did swear on a new member to the HR committee several weeks ago since last time I was here. For our residents, if you're still willing to serve on various boards and committees, please send an application slash resume to our clerk of council. We'll have an interview with you and to get you plugged into the various boards and committees we have in the city. And I would also be remiss if I did not acknowledge a very special birthday that happened this past Friday. I'd like to wish a happy, very, very, very special birthday to the members of the United States Army. States Army, 249 years of greatness. Myself and Dr. Moore, Vice Mayor, two proud Army veterans and to our veterans in Forest Park, thank you for your service. And that's all I have to share.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Do you have any work session items to add?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report, thank you.
All right, do you have any work session items?
None.
All right, moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to our Clerk of Council, Takiya Bailey, and our communication coordinator with the Witten Woods City School District, Drew Jackson, for amazing event today. And so we want to thank the community for coming out and celebrating Mike Edwards. He's a two-time Super Bowl champion, born and raised here in Forest Park. And so officially today, June 17th, is Mike Edwards Day. And so thank you for your counsel, thank you, council, for support, City Manager Don Jones for making this happen, and so thank you. That completes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Moore, and thank you for your work orchestrating that as well, because it was, it was an honor to, to recognize him, even though I'm not a Bills fan or a Chiefs fan or a Bucks fan, I am a fan of Mike Edwards, so. All right, and do you have any work session items to add?
Uh, no, I do not.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mayor, no report, but just to comment on the, the parking rec, rec staff on doing a good job of getting our summer events kicked off from this past week, Tuesday, Music Night Out. That was a great showing, a great event. We know that the staff has a, has a lot on the, the table and on the agenda. Hopefully, our weather would give, give some assistance. We know that we're about to face some, some heated days and pretty much looked at out of this week, so that may be, maybe some call alert options to, based on how the, the weather meter is being identified, whether we should carry through, but we just want to give an initial thanks to the, the staff, and, and I know they'll continue to do good work in, in presenting these events to our residents. And that's, that's it on, on speaking to the public, but there was a follow-up on work session, just on the AACC comment about the African-American Chamber of Commerce, just to get a reference on a communication that came to me. And, and to also have a follow-up on the residential damaged homes by fire throughout the city. I know we've got 10 noted residents, there was some action that I saw with a couple, but it's been idle lately, so I just want to see if we can get an update on, on where we at and.
Okay.
The efforts that need to continue with those, but other than that, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, so I have the African-American Chamber of Commerce discussion, and then you said there's residential home, fire, fire damage?
Right.
Okay.
Residential homes that have, due to fire damage.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. All right, that concludes item number six on the agenda, which is reports from council members. Moving on to item number seven, just to echo a few sentiments that were up here earlier, the city has started, we kicked off our summer events a couple of weeks ago, we had the, the Fourth Annual City Cycle Event, so I want to thank residents for coming out, because that was actually very well attended. We had our first party in the park, and we will have another one, I believe, two weeks from now, so it was also very well attended. It was exactly what you would like to see in the park. There were kids on the, on the playground, there were people enjoying the music, and then I even saw families utilizing the baseball diamonds, so, and a lot of people using the new walking path in Central Park. So as we continue to, to grow and, and add amenities to that park, I, I encourage residents to keep coming out, and I thank you all for coming out and enjoying those amenities that are provided. Also, I do want to check, to take the time to appreciate the Phi Psi Omega Chapter of Alpha Capa, Alpha Sorority Incorporated. They did invite city council, myself, Councilmember Adams were there, to their annual Jazz Brunch. It was very well attended, as well as there were a few members of other city councils there, so including the mayor of Woodland, the mayor of Springdale, mayor of Cincinnati, and a lot of Cincinnati City Council members. We partner with the, the chapter that is actually incorporated in Forest Park a lot, so we do appreciate their partnership, and we appreciate the invitation to the, the Jazz Brunch. It was a beautiful event, and we do thank you for having that. And at this time, the only items I have on the work session is we're going to do a code of conduct discussion, and then we're also going to finish the conversation around boards and commissions. And with that, that concludes my report. So moving on to item number seven, which is the city's manager, city manager's report, Mr. Don Jones.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'll try and keep it pretty short and sweet today, a few items that are related to some things in the park and public works. If you notice, the long Winton Road around Skyline and then the Kemper Meadow there, that corner, we, the retaining walls have been replaced and are in the process of being finalized, so those are looking pretty good. If you notice, they were really kind of starting to crumble. The bike shelter at Central Park is under construction now, that should be done within a few weeks, and that'll be a nice addition. Our Public Works folks are actually designed it and are constructing it, so that's a pretty good use of our folks as well. And if you notice, the concrete pad there that's really close, that great big one that's next to the shelter house, that is going to be the home of a new workout, outdoor workout facility, for lack of a better term. And I want to thank the Life Center for donating that to the city. It's a very expensive, a couple hundred grand, I believe. That's, we have it in stock, we've laid the concrete, so it's just a matter of getting the installation folks here to install it, so that should be done later this summer. Hopefully, we'll get some good weather and we can use the outside facility. It's coming Thursday, we're having a Soul Food Food Truck Night. There'll be six, six food trucks at Central Park, starting at 6:30, going until 9:00, but we're also, it's also food truck movie night, so we're, not only are we going to have six food trucks, we're going to be showing the movie Soul outdoors, so bring your, bring your air conditioner, your fans, and your, and your blankets, and your chairs, and your kids, and it'll be just a great event, it's free to the public, obviously the food trucks aren't, but the, the movie's free, be a nice evening to get out and enjoy the park. Again, that's going to start around nine o'clock, the movie starts. The library, the drive, will start this week in terms of the road, that's, if you notice, it's surrounded by a, by a fence right now, you'll see the one drive there. That's the last piece of construction, in terms of the outside construction. That's going to be started this week. The library is opening soon, it's still on schedule for later this summer. And then finally, this coming tomorrow, we're having a Juneteenth event at our senior center, that's Tuesday, June 18th, from 11:30 to 1:00. It's a featured documentary, it's called Juneteenth, The Freedom to Learn. Lunch will be provided, it's free and open to the public, and everyone's invited, so come on out to the, the senior center at 11:30 tomorrow, get some free air conditioning, enjoy a nice documentary, and help celebrate Juneteenth. Also, the brick sidewalks are still under construction, we've got a little piece that still has to be done, so anybody that's called and said, hey, aren't you going to finish that? Yes, we are, but we're, we're a little, little snafu on the, the contractors run out of, run out of materials, so once that new order gets in, they'll be able to finish the other half, and that'll be the final piece, but I think they look pretty nice right now, so. Other than that, be available for any questions.
Really quick, Don, on the, the food truck and movie night on Thursday, considering it is going to be 90 degrees all week and the heat index is very close to 100, should it reach a, a point where it's actually unsafe? Are we going to reschedule that event, or?
If we'd have a need to reschedule, yes. If we have a need to cancel, we will schedule it.
Okay.
And we had little discussions about the possibly, the food trucks obviously have to be outside, but the movie could be inside if we had to.
Okay.
But we'll see how it goes on Thursday, but yeah, it is, it's going to be pretty hot.
All right.
Do we provide water at that event outside?
Um, it's a good idea, yes, we will.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Okay. Just quickly, I, I love, I love the faux brick in the, in the intersection, but I was thinking, I was, I went down by over there on Northland, and I saw those, right, they're kind of, you know, they're not as shiny. Did, is there, do they, do they come and re, redo it, re-paint it? How does it, how does the, how does it work?
It's an overlay.
Uh-huh.
They would have to probably take it off and put it back on.
Okay. Is that like, is that something scheduled when we do, when we get those contracts that they'll?
We'll can take, I'll get you more information on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're looking aged.
Yeah.
At that.
A little bit.
Yeah.
In that area.
That area was done, I'm not sure when it was done.
I couldn't, five years more?
It's been 10 years plus.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's been more than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the same thing, but they do, actually, they're kind of aging like real brick.
Right, they, right, okay.
All right, that concludes item number seven. Thank you for that, Don. Moving on to item number eight, which is other reports, we're going to start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I do not have a specific report to provide, but I would answer questions if there are any.
All right, does anyone have any questions for our law director? All right, moving on to our other report from our clerk of council, Ms. Takiya Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 20-2024, as well as Resolution Number 29-2024 through 33-2024, has been posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders, and I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, ordinance number 18-2024.
Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that this was posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Will the clerk call the role on the motion to suspend?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 18-2024 passes 5-2. All right, moving on to item number eight on the agenda, which is new business, and I need another motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinance number 20-2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
That these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting. All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey.
Reminder, this is a first reading, so we will not be voting on this today. Moving on, I need another motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the first time by title only, resolution numbers 29-2024 and 33-2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
That these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark.
Welcome.
Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes, will the clerk please read Resolution Number 29-2024 by title only?
Resolution Number 29-2024, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against a property in the city of Forest Park for the indigent burial program.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I make a motion that we table Resolution Number 29-2024.
Second.
It's been moved improperly.
Is this to a date certain, or?
Uh, to a date for, what is the date of the next council meeting? That would be 24th, or?
July 1st.
Oh, it would be July 1st. I make a, I'll rescind my motion, and I make a motion that we table Resolution Number 29-2024 to July 1st.
Okay.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion? I want to go over this during work session, given the, the, the nature of the request to further discuss the indigent burial program, just to get a little bit more clarity. So with that, I would urge adoption to table. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to, uh, on the motion?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 30-2024 passes by title only.
Resolution Number 30-2024, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against a property in the city of Forest Park for the indigent burial program.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I make a motion that we table Resolution Number 30-2024.
Second.
It's been moved improperly.
Is this to a date certain, or?
Uh, to a date for, what is the date of the next council meeting? That would be 24th, or?
July 1st.
Oh, it would be July 1st. I make a, I'll rescind my motion, and I make a motion that we table Resolution Number 30-2024 to July 1st.
Okay.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion? I want to go over this during work session, given the, the, the nature of the request to further discuss the indigent burial program, just to get a little bit more clarity. So with that, I would urge adoption to table. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to, uh, on the motion?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 30-2024 passes 6-1, oh, well, the motion to table Resolution Number 30-2024 passes. All right, moving on, will the clerk please read Resolution Number 31-2024 by title only?
Resolution Number 31-2024, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Fuller Ford, Inc., for the lease purchase of one Ford Transit van through the state of Ohio bidding process.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 31-2024.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, the fire department will acquire a 2024 Ford Transit van from Fuller Ford without the need for a bid process, using funds available in the fire fund through the state procurement bidding process. The van will serve as promotional tool to inform the public about city services and events, attend city functions, and support the health department during health emergencies in Forest Park.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 31-2024 passes 6-1, oh, well, the motion to table Resolution Number 30-2024 passes. All right, moving on, will the clerk please read Resolution Number 31-2024 by title only?
Resolution Number 31-2024, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Fuller Ford, Inc., for the lease purchase of one Ford Transit van through the state of Ohio bidding process.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 31-2024.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Resolution number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Fuller Ford, Inc., for the lease purchase of one Ford Transit van through the state of Ohio bidding process.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes, I move that we adopt resolution number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, the fire department will acquire a two thousand twenty-four Ford Transit van from Fuller Ford without the need for a bid process, using funds available in the fire fund through the state procurement bidding process. The van will serve as promotional tool to inform the public about city services and events, attend city functions, and support the health department during health emergencies in Forest Park.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, resolution number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-four passes seven zero. Uh, will the clerk please read resolution number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four, accepting the bid of Triton Services for the Police Department Lobby Expansion Project.[1569.33]